I need to scroll down for them.
Yeah, click on that. That's the session.
Think about.
Good evening, everybody.
Hold on.
We're holding.
Okay, now you can go.
It's all right. Sorry for that, everybody that's watching. Apparently, we had to hold. Thank you, Mr. Bill. Uh, this is a work session tonight, so, uh, we won't be having, uh, comments from the audience. That will be, uh, next week. Uh, we do appreciate those that are watching from home. Just want to recognize, uh, one of the candidates for council in the audience, uh, Bill Monty. Good to see you tonight. Uh, thanks for coming in. Uh, we'll have, uh, the tenure award for Kathleen P. For forty years of service. I'm looking forward to that. I encourage the council members to, uh, if you want to give her a card or something like that. She's, uh...
A car?
Card.
Give her a card.
Card.
Okay.
Give her a card.
Only the mayor's required to give automobiles.
Excuse me, mayor, is in the car out of line?
No, when I leave. That's when I'm going to ask for a car or something like that.
Right.
Okay. Uh, then we also have proclamations, Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Uh, we recognize that, and, uh, I wish we didn't have to. Um, three is a public hearing, consideration of a sale of property locally known as sixteen oh seven Osborne Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Mr. Tisland.
This is, uh, property that, uh, the city acquired, um, had been derelict and vacant for quite some time. Um, to demolish the structure was in, uh, very poor condition. Here at sixteen seven Osborne, just south of Core Street. Uh, both neighbors have expressed interest in acquiring a portion of the lot. These are all forty-foot lots, so they're very narrow lots. Um, so that would give each neighbor a sixty-foot lot, a little more yard space, um, a little more room to, uh, park or, uh, do an addition if need be. Um, but, uh, both are amenable to, uh, acquiring half of that, uh, lot, um, with a total sale of seven hundred dollars between the two. Um, so three fifty each side for a twenty-foot portion.
Counsel, are you guys groovy?
Is that something we don't put up for auction like the other ones?
We still, uh, put up for auction, but our normal process is either a adjacent neighbor acquires it and combines it with their lot, or they have to build a new structure on the lot.
I remember that. Thanks, Eric.
Eric, just to clarify, and I know in the past, even when we split them, we still had a minimum price of five hundred, right? Are we making an... Has that historically been the case? And are we...
I don't know for that. We've had, uh, five hundred for half a lot, or...
I'm okay with the number.
They put in five hundred-dollar bids, uh, each for a full lot, and so we, uh, preparing two deeds, uh, did increase that more than, uh, half a mile. But that'd be up to counsel if you want me to talk to them about more, or...
I think, I'm okay with it.
I'm okay with it.
I just wanted to make sure we're saying the same system, so somebody doesn't...
Peanut Butter, are you groovy too?
I am always groovy.
Okay.
That's good to know.
All right, I'm groovy too. Number four is a public hearing, consideration of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of right-of-way located adjacent to eighteen fifteen to eighteen forty-five Des Moines Avenue, Burlington, Iowa. First reading on this one, Tisdale.
This is, uh, right-of-way adjacent to property owned by Carly Nelson. Um, there's two portions here, one in, shown in yellow, and one in green. Um, the yellow is an alley they, uh, want to make some improvements to that, uh, repaving it. Uh, they own entirety of their property on the east and west side of the alley. Um, recently had, uh, the structure at eighteen forty-five, the prescribed burn there. Um, but, uh, it's essentially just a private driveway for their use, and, uh, they want to own the property if they're going to make an improvements to the paving on that property. And then the east-west is, uh, a portion of appears to be former Cass Street right-of-way. Um, thirty feet of right-of-way was, uh, platted out of these southern lots. Uh, no right-of-way was platted out of the northern lot to date, and there's no intention for that street to go through. Um, this northern thirty feet on eighteen forty-five was previously vacated and transferred to this eighteen forty-five, so we, uh, look to do the same for this green portion. Um, we are looking to maintain some access or sewer easements, um, through the area here. There's green sanitary sewer. We just want to make sure we have access to that. And then there is a storm sewer that comes down on the property of the north, uh, making sure we have access to that as well. So, uh, would not want any structures built over the existing sewer here, but on the north-east west, uh, right-of-way there, there's no structures under it. It would just be for access to get to it.
Counsel, are we groovy?
I'm good.
The only question I had, um, how will this affect access at nineteen oh nine?
Just right now, I believe they have an easement that comes through this eighteen forty-five. Um, they don't use this portion that we're vacating here. They have a driveway that comes up to that.
Okay.
Back property there. But, um, so this portion here has already been vacated, and they still use that. It appears to be an easement there, but, uh, this back portion they do not use. And they have, uh, primary driveways on the north side of their home into their garages, but this seems to be a secondary access to the property.
Yeah.
Satisfied?
Yeah.
Are we good?
Good.
Number five is a resolution awarding contract for the two thousand nineteen North End odor control project at the Burlington, Iowa wastewater treatment facility. There it is. Did you show Dawn yet?
No, because he got here late.
Okay, we're gonna get... We have to present. Peanut Butter wants to present you with something before he starts his spiel. This is important, Dawn.
In Burlington, we all get a better night's sleep, little pillow, because you're taking care of our water and our doo-doo's. So, I got these for you. They're sponge ball.
It's all for you, babe.
Their tension, tension.
Something tells me you're gonna have those worn out in about three weeks' notch.
Are these edible?
You're getting excited, aren't you, Bill? The excitement is overwhelming.
Yes.
Well, uh, as indicated in your council packet, this is pertaining to the odor control project for the north end of the plant. Um, we went out for bids. We received two bids, as listed in the council item memo to the city manager. The low bid was from Carly Nelson of Burlington, Iowa, for the amount of four hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars. Uh, the council item memo also indicates that, uh, they were the apparent low bidder. Uh, they were contacted about the project after opening the bids to discuss with them about their bid amount, and at some point in time, it was determined that a major supplier of materials for the project had, um, not understood the project, and subsequently, their supplier for a major component of the project had indicated to them that they were withdrawing the ability to provide the material for the price quoted. So, they were withdrawing their option to provide materials. So, um, H.R. Green basically provided us with a letter to the effect that the city council had two options. One would be to allow the, uh, apparent low bidder to withdraw their bid, and in that instance, the city has the right to pursue the, uh, low bidder's bid bond, which is five percent of the amount bid, and rebid the project. Uh, the second option they identified was to, um, go to the next low bidder and not rebid, to allow the contractor, the low bidder, the apparent low bidder, to withdraw from the contract and go with the second bidder, uh, which was, uh, Leander Construction Company of Canton, Illinois, and their bid amount was in the amount of, uh, five hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, significantly more than what the apparent low bid was. And the engineer's recommendation to the city was to go ahead and proceed on the basis of the first option, which was to reject the bid, pursue the bid bond, and rebid the project. In discussions with them, um, I found that there was a third option that they were familiar with that has been used in other projects. I do not know. It wasn't clear to me whether it was projects they were involved with or not. And, uh, indicated that, um, the low, apparent low bidder had had conversations with the second supplier of the material, who indicated to them what they could provide, the materials in accordance with specification requirements, and, uh, they would, of course, need to pass that cost on to us. And that would add approximately, at the time, the information was approximately twenty-five thousand dollars to the cost of the project. I didn't really under... fully understand how that would be done. They mentioned the term change order, uh, that the city would, uh, allow the adjustment of the project, total project cost, and using a change order process, in amount of some negotiated or agreed-to fee that was approximately twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, there's been some additional telephone calls and letters written. Um, and it's my understanding of this today that, uh, the city manager was seeking legal counsel on whether, in fact, that's a legal option or not.
James?
Yeah, that is true. I did ask that. Um, I can't imagine that it is, but, uh, we'll find out if the attorney come... what the attorney comes back.
Can't imagine that we can?
No, I would think that you'd have to do one of the two options that's listed here. But we'll find out what the city attorney does say on that. Uh, my assumption would be that, uh, the step forward is to do option one, rebid.
And just go after the bid bond? I mean, it's... Still, if we rebid, it's not going to be the price of Leander's, so...
Well, you don't know what it is, actually.
Well, what it could end up being is we hit the bid bond of twenty-five thousand dollars, go back to rebid, and then, um, uh, Carly Nelson comes back with, you know, their original bid plus whatever it would cost for the new material, and then we end up giving them... awarding them the bid for four hundred and...
Well, they're gonna come back with a completely different bid.
Yeah, but with the difference in... with the difference in the bid, I can't see him coming back with the exact same bid. I still see that... I think... I would see that we... I would think that we would have some type of savings.
So, so are we at a point, Jim, where we table this until you find a...
Your action on this is next week.
Yeah.
I absent... absent the attorney, though, saying something that is... that would suggest that you could do what H.R. Green has said they've seen and done other places, um, the op... the option of rebidding makes the most sense.
Okay. But we should have some info back. Okay. Thanks.
Counsel, are you guys satisfied?
Yep.
Thank you for this.
Sure. Have fun. Got those at convention for you, Don.
That's good stuff, Peanut Butter. Let's go to the, uh, proposed consent agenda. Uh, number one is a resolution approving the replacement of Valley Street rail crossing with Burlington Junction Railway. Who's got it?
It's me.
Okay.
You can have mine if you want to, Nick.
You should have the... I was worried about the dollar figure. Uh, so the crossing at Valley Street, uh, the Hawkeye Hole, um, is on its way. It's sealed up. Um, the rail will be putting some rock back and moving their rail alignment. Um, but in the project bid, uh, there's paving coming up to the track... to the tracks, but the, the railroad pad was not a part of the bid, uh, because in the switch, when it got taken out, it was destroyed. Um, so in your packets, you saw, uh, fifty-five or fifty-eight thousand...
Fifty-three, eight.
Fifty-three, eight. I knew fifty-four was pretty close. Um, for a replacement rail, uh, crossing there. Um, I think it needs to be there. It'll be something that is very similar to what we will have on the other two, uh, Washington and Jefferson Street. Um, it's a replacement for what was already there, but was destroyed because of the project. When I saw the price, I thought it was pretty good. I expect it's quite a bit higher.
So, at one point in time, we were talking about eliminating one set of rails there. Would that be...
The switch is actually just north of that. There is only one...
It is.
There is only one mine that goes through that intersection.
Okay, all right.
So, in regards to even that discussion, and I forward it on to you, Leo, we have... they are still in the process of evaluating whether they can move that north, uh, and out of the area, and they're hoping to have an answer back to us in the next few weeks. And I assume that you have, Leo, from design standpoint, you need that at a fixed point here fairly soon. But that might still be coming towards us as a... as something that they're looking at a participation on that.
But it won't affect this?
Won't affect this.
So, the railroad's paying for all the railroad stuff? We're just paying for the road stuff?
Just the crossing. We're paying for the crossing, correct.
Okay.
And so, they plan to... the railroad, Burlington Junction plans to be in there in the next couple of weeks. I think they'll tie the work that they're doing with their track realignment along with this work. They're coordinating all that because it's on their rail. Will happen here in the next... upon approval, the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
So, that should be buttoned up relatively soon. Um, paving to that will have to be done after that, but that... that's not too much, so...
Okay.
And with the river coming up, we don't have to... have to go around it should it go up to that level, so...
Are we satisfied?
Yeah.
Right on. Okay, number two is a resolution approving application for funds through the Community Catalyst Building Remediation Program from the Iowa Economic Development Authority.
Uh, I was supposed to have this removed from the agenda.
It's removed.
Uh, this item, and then on the work session, the emergency grant funding request for three hundred Washington Street.
Okay.
We had it on here. It was supposed to get moved to the following work session.
Okay.
My mistake for not getting it off.
Well, Jim, quit making mistakes like that. Maybe they're okay with it, but I'm not.
You may catch the, the fire.
Okay, so, talk to me. A resolution approving the sale of a fire engine to the Gulfport Gladstone Fire Protection District. Chief.
Okay. Well, since we got that new engine back in July, we're in the position to sell one of our engines. So, this is the oldest one. We called Engine seven thirty-seven. Uh, we got it, I think, in twenty-ten when we inherited it from West Burlington with a lot of other equipment when we took over the township. So, it's a nineteen ninety-two. That's twenty-eight years old. Um, uh, we were looking at listing it on one of those auction sites. Uh, we haven't had a lot of good luck selling stuff on there. It usually goes pretty cheap, and, uh, we looked around on there for some similar aged vehicles just to get an idea, and some of the prices looked pretty good, like the asking price. I thought that looks good. But then you can go back and you can see the history. You can see what stuff actually sells for. So, we found three on there that were same model. Uh, one was a ninety-one, one was a ninety-two, and one was a ninety... another one was a ninety-two, and the high price was eight thousand, two hundred for an engine that had eleven thousand, four hundred. And then, and then we have to pay ten percent of that to the auction house. So, we had been just letting some people in the area know that we have this truck for sale. It's maybe a little bit more valuable right here because it was made in Alexis, Illinois. So, anything you want repaired, they're really good about... they have the parts. They get good mechanics. So, has a little bit more value here than it would say Montana, or some... We've sent trucks to Idaho.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I think New Mexico, one went down there. So, anyway, we had four departments in the area that expressed interest. Only one made us an offer. Uh, started a little bit lower than ten thousand, but they came up to a ten thousand dollar, uh, price, which I think is more than fair. It's the, uh... Let's see. I'm trying to think of the name. It's, uh, Gulfport Gladstone Fire Protection District. After the floods of two thousand eight, uh, Gulfport doesn't have their own fire department. It comes out of, uh, Gladstone. So, they made us the ten thousand dollar offer, and there's the money side, which is great. I think that's more than a fair asking price or selling price, but they also provide us a lot of service over the years with water when we have, uh, fires out in the township. So, now they respond with somewhere over seven thousand gallons of water. They bring two tenders over. They said with... if they bought another one, they could leave this one in town, and they could bring their three big tenders over, which some... somewhere around ten thousand, four hundred gallons of water. So, that's a lot of water to haul down the road, and something that you really can't put a price on, uh, that... that kind of service. So, they're very reliable. They love to come to help us out. So, my recommendation is we go ahead and sell that to them.
Counsel, are we groovy with that?
Sounds like a good partnership to preserve.
Yeah.
Right on. Thanks, chief.
Thanks.
Uh, that takes us to number four, resolution revising and updating the twenty-eight E agreement for the city-county health care plan, COBCO. James?
I guess this is me. I hadn't realized I was gonna do this, but, uh, uh, the COBCO looks like has been in place since eighty-three originally. So, we've... over the years, uh, COBCO, the county... the city-county, uh, health benefit plan, uh, the arrangement between us, uh, has had several different amendments to it. Lark, the majority of those have been as we've added members, but we've had a couple of other amendments as well over the years. This is designed to try to take the amendments that have occurred and get them into one con... consolidated document. So, that's where you see the atta... like the attachment A lists all the existing members. As there's changes over time now to the membership, we'll have... we'll amend that exhibit. Um, the second, uh, attachment or exhibit that is included in this twenty-eight E is the bylaws. Um, the bylaws were already in existence. A couple of things that really changed, um, as you look through the voting procedures in here, one of them had voting procedures with two-thirds votes. The other had it with three-fourths votes. This gets them all to where they're talking about the two-thirds language, and so it's consistent between them. Uh, the... then the other thing that I can think of from the... on the bylaws side, uh, we changed, uh, some of the language in regards to, uh, the relationship with our third-party administrator. Uh, we work with two reverse banks on... on that, and, uh, this recognizes the existing practice that we have in terms of, uh, contracting out for that service and providing some of the... I mean, it ends up, or it has been, usually, a lot of the negotiations on that has been Stephanie and then, um, who? Becky. Becky from, um...
Perry.
Yeah, Becky Perry from, uh, Metro... the Waste Authority, uh, as the chair of the organization. Um, and this kind of recognizes that kind of practice of having them go and do that negotiation and bringing it to the group as a whole. Uh, otherwise, the language... Anything else that's changed? Other what? The language matches what was in here before.
You guys satisfied with that?
And Matt, you've served on this and been a part of this process.
Yeah, I only have been updated since the nineties, right? And we just sat down and did that a few weeks ago and went through that, so...
Sounds good.
Everybody's groovy?
Yep. Good work.
Okay, we've got, uh, hearing set for October twenty-first, consideration of plans inspected with two thousand nineteen sewer project, and also consideration of ordinance in any section fifty-eight point one-three, type A permit, general standard for chapter fifty-eight noise control, Burlington Municipal Code. Uh, brings us to discussion items for the night. Did you want to say anything on that, ET? Okay. Uh, discussion items for tonight. Uh, number one is treasurer's report. Come on down. Annette, class of eighty-seven. That means she graduated in eighty-seven. That's why I say that. Just in case anybody's wondering.
Okay, in your packet, again, it's two treasurer's reports. The updated one for June thirtieth, which we... our auditors were here at the end of October, so you'll see it for another month for sure before we think that it's... before we say that it's fine. Um, for the most part, I mean, I don't foresee any big changes happening in it. And then the other report is August. And again, when you're looking at August, you gotta remember that we're still accruing things back to last year. So, any revenues that came in that pertain to thing... services that took place in the previous year, you gotta accrue back. Um, there's nothing that looks unusual to me. So, if you guys have any questions?
How do I look tonight?
What?
Like I normally do?
Your hair looks great.
I kinda like the purple.
You like the hair?
The purple.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
So, thank you.
Let's not get into the details of it. What did James?
As you go look at the expenditures year-to-date, we're below the percentages. Uh, should be about sixteen percent, and the majority of those categories, we are under that. Uh, a couple of things that you have a bulk... a bulk expense versus budget, just on a timing issue. Um, revenues, uh, and I guess the treasurer's report, the balances. The one thing I'd note, you got two funds that saw some significant drops, uh, this last year, and those are not gonna improve no matter how many more of these, uh, that... and that revises. Uh, the Recplex and the Golf Course, both are down forty thousand, and the...
Tall or separately?
Each. The balances went from the fifty-plus thousand range to fifteen thousand range in each fund. Uh, for the Recplex, that's with us subsidizing it to, I think, in the seventy thousand range this last year. Uh, so it truly look... had a deficit balance more in a hundred and ten thousand range.
Was there more hard... was there more, uh, equipment that we had to buy out to the... that we have to buy out to the?
That's... that's for operating. We also do a transfer for the equipment, and when we did the original budget, we had a... I... we might have had it budgeted at a hundred and ten thousand, and then I lowered it because we were doing... we'd done better last year, but it ended up coming in right where I budgeted originally. We just started subsidizing it on a larger and larger basis, and I think that's a trend that you have to be cognizant of and recognize is likely to see continue. The Golf Course, I... now, Eric, I think you're probably gonna have a season-ending summary happen later this fall, or... or as we got... come into budget season, but, uh, part of that has to do with some of our rain that ha... that occurred in the May timeframe, June timeframe, where you lost a lot of, uh, play. A couple of major tournaments got lost, but the rest of... you're... you also have a... a portion that's just op... operationally, it's harder and harder for them to... to cash flow and... and break even.
Are we ever gonna see the... the report that we were supposed to see from the chamber for the, uh...
What would you have to say on that, Eric?
Wasn't a tremendous amount of value from that.
They have a group that is, uh, reviewing it, and who... who sits on that from the city that's looked at that?
Uh, myself and Kirk have met on that.
And... and out of the information that I saw that had come out of it, I don't know if I saw the last version or not, but, uh, it... it talked about synergies from consolidating operations, but it really did not give much for practical to... to make for changes. You had a little bit in there about adding a s... maybe a second concession stand?
Yeah.
I don't know if it gave anything... any recommendations for pricing?
I'd have to look at it again. It's been a little while, but we could get that out to council as well.
But, yeah, weren't we expecting to see stuff on marketing and concessions and pricing?
I think that you'll...
I think that most...
But the chamber and us will both be disappointed with what we got out of that for information. I know the chamber was, and I didn't see anything out of the rough draft, and I know Eric... or Jason at the time had sent it back for revisions. Um, but maybe we should have coordinate with Chelsea.
All right, uh...
But on a pricing basis, I don't think it gave us a whole lot.
Is everybody, uh, maybe not groovy or satisfied? Are you cool?
Yep.
Moving forward?
Moving on.
Okay. All right, our second discussion I have tonight is Tiger Grant.
So, we had our public hearings last week. Uh, it's the second round of public hearings that were held on the Tiger Grant. Uh, our timeframe requires us to be in a position where we, uh, are at thirty percent plans fairly quickly.
Yes.
And if you kind of... I guess you're gonna review where we are in that process and what we have to do to keep on task for, uh, expending these funds and not violating what DOT has set for regulations on us.
Okay, so Monday night, we went through a hour and a half, two-hour presentation on... on the Tiger Grant, and we got all the input, and we kind of read it back. So, I wanted to kind of go through this very quickly, some of these, uh, some of these slides, if I can get this to move. There we go. So, this is kind of what we... what we told the public, what the schedule was, uh, where we were at on the riverfront, which everybody was very interested in, what feedback we've been getting, what are the goals, and then what are the differences, Main Street, Jefferson Street, and some discussion. This is the process of where we're at. So, the orange part here shows we're up into the design phase. Um, final design dictated by DOT means it has to be done by summer two thousand. So, we've got a little more... little less than a year to get through, which is a lot of work. This is... this is significant design work. Like Jim said, we're kind of finishing what we call preliminary design, but we need to get to final design and get moving to make that... that summer two thousand twenty. Two thousand twenty, then you get a two-year between spring of two thousand twenty-one and summer of two thousand twenty-three construction phase. What we have told people is that the construction phase would be two contracts, a streets contract and a riverfront contract. Both of them would have two phases. So, the phases of the street would be... maybe you do Jefferson first and then Main the next year, so one per year, and the riverfront, maybe you do the north part first and then the south part. So, what are... what are... what's going on on the riverfront? Everybody knows there's potential hotel, potential, uh, parking garage. So, what are we gonna do? Until... what we've decided is... is that until December, the end of December, we can kind of hold off on doing any design in the areas where the parking garage and the hotel may go. After December, we've got to make some tough decisions, and the decisions would be go forward with the design as our master plan showed, and then you'll lose some design. If... if then the hotel comes into play, you'll lose so... some design. If we knew by the end of December, hotel's out, then you won't lose anything, or hotel's in, you won't lose anything. So, that's kind of our key date there. Things that we can work on, this is that, um, southern boat ramp with the jetty that comes out. We can work on that. We can work behind the auditorium. We can work on the dock... out, we can work on that, we can work behind the auditorium, we can work on the dock systems the whole way, and then we can work on the north part up in here. So those are things that we'll do irregardless, and we are moving forward. So that's kind of our, kind of the state of where we're at there. Public input, we did get a lot of discussion on parking, we got a lot of information on biking, on how does, how do you maintain, things we want to build on, we got information on making sure the connections to the river, Snake Alley is an important thing, greens in, in streetscaping, and then we know that the historic districts are something we have to work with. So goals, and I'm kind of going through this fast, if you have questions, certainly fire, fire away. Goals, goals and design drivers, from the roads especially, so now we're almost always on to where the road projects are. Create a strong sense of arrival, connect to the downtown, define a recognizable look and inviting pedestrians, so work on what we've already have and enhancement. Improve the quality of life, reduce vehicle speeds, all this kind of stuff. Promote walking and biking, even though it's somewhat promoted already, try to match into everything we've got going. This is a big one, enhance stormwater management, it helps you in a number of different ways. With your sewer separation, this is a big part of what we, why we're, why we're doing all this, and you'll see as we get further that this is gonna be highlighted. Enhance, make Burlington a special place, that's another, define the characteristics. Okay, so this is, this is kind of the areas that we showed, with the major gateways are in the big stars, the minor gateways, and we're gonna do things at those gateways to kind of show off the streetscaping, and you'll, you'll see some of that. Main Street, Main Street's a little bit different, different than Jefferson. Main Street has a lot of pavement right now, and we looked at it as a north, meaning north of the tracks, and a south, south of the tracks. The north is kind of more of a commercial-type area, and the south starts to look a little bit more industrial, so we, we kind of treated them different. Jefferson Street, build on what we have now, and we basically wanted to, we're doing some things with the parking, trying to maximize pedestrian movement, we worked very heavily with the stakeholders, almost every business owner was involved with these stakeholders to make sure that we were doing things that would, would work with them. So on Main Street, the south part, we had two lanes with parallel parking, and then drain, so on the south part, two lanes, parallel parking on each side, and then a big drainage swale on the side, the riverside. And then on the north lane, we do two lanes with a middle, and you'll see that, that section coming up. So this is on Main Street, this is the southern section, and you can see the, the trail over here that connects to the riverfront, and then this big area that we can do landscaping and stormwater management as well as cleaning. The north section starts to look more, more like a business-type area, we use the three lanes, a turning lane in the middle, and then you've got parallel parking on each side. Lot of green infrastructure you'll see on the sides on that. Then you get to Jefferson, not as much of the green infrastructure, more of the drainable pavements and that type of thing. We did balance the pedestrian zone, so right now you have on the north side a big pedestrian zone, and on the south side a smaller one, so we're gonna kind of change the way the street is and, and end up having two, and you'll see that. The bike trails will be what they call charos, shared with, with, with the, with the cars or vehicles. This is option A, we had two options, this option, quickly you can see, you can see people sitting away from the buildings, so that there's space in here, you'll see that in a lot of bigger cities now, like a Chicago-type thing, but it's not, not as common. Your business owners weren't as fired up about that, they would rather have more room at their shops like this. So this is the one, option B is what everybody seems to go with, you can see some of the lighting differences here, drainable pavement, and again, I think that was, that was a, a big debate point that went over a lot of discussion, but, but I think everybody settled on it. This is just showing you the differences of, the kind of green infrastructure that'll be used. On Jefferson, you're gonna have more of this with the drainable pavement, and then on Main Street, you're gonna have, the north part of Main Street, you're gonna have this, south part of Main Street would be more like this. Parking, parking was a big discussion, a lot of different things on parking, we tried very hard to make sure that we were trying to save and capture as many parking spots as we can have, but to also maximize the, the area for, for the businesses. So this is a strategy, and, and as you can see, we totaled up up here, for instance, on Jefferson vein, how many parking spots we have totally, and then what will we have when we're done? So we could actually, on all of it together, have even a few more than you have now as we did that. This shows the parking strategy just on Main, and it's kind of the same thing. We said at the south part of Main, we're losing a few, we're gonna pick up a few on the north part of Main. Just more of the same, trying to, and I know you've, you've talked about parking a lot, looking at areas that are outside of just Jefferson, looking at like a block that goes either way to try to pick up some parking, and that seems to be something that everybody's, I guess, thinking we should be trying to do. And this is again, just showing some of that off-street parking areas. Okay, so lighting and things like that, we wanted to tie into the river, we wanted everything to look not exactly the same, but so it batches and it, it blends together. On the riverfront, you have more of a, more of a modern look, and on the, in the streets now, you have more of a traditional. So what we thought for Jefferson and Main is if we did something in the middle, then we can kind of connect them together. We're also looking at, at intersections and mid-block crossings, having this cantenary look, this is Dubuque here, that's one we did about five years ago, I think it looks really good. We're looking at, everybody seems to want the smart lighting, that can do a lot of different things with the lighting, lighting placement, making sure that where you put green trees, that the lighting is angled down more, and that's all this, the newer things that are going on. We looked at what amenities that you currently have, what is working very well, and what isn't working very well, and then how do we blend it together? And we did come up with a number of different things in here that, that are, that are working very well, the paver seemed to be going good, this concrete, so this is all gonna be tied in during that final design. Okay, issues, two contracts, two-year construction, that's something that the federal DOT seems to be having a little bit of a problem with, because they wanted to have one number with one contract. We're still working through it, our state DOT says we should be able to work to it, so at this point, that's how we're going forward. We really want two contracts for a number of reasons. One is the next thing, environmental clearance. The, what we've done so far with the roads, they're pretty clean, and it looks like a categorical exclusion could be done, that's a very abbreviated process, and what we hoped we'd get, but the riverfront's not looking as clean. They want us to do this big mussel study, all your mussel studies in the past, the state will not let us go forward, it's kind of funny, the feds would use them, and the state said no. So, different people. So we've got, as soon as the water goes back down, we've got divers ready to go out and do mussels. If they find nothing, then we'd be probably in pretty good shape to argue heavily for the categorical exclusion. If they find anything, you won't get it. And the last time they did it, they found a shell of a, a shell, not an actual mussel, but a shell of an endangered species statewide. If they find that, they'll make us go through the environmental clearance, which we'll get through, it'll just be, it's just more, more work, and it, it takes some time, and it'll push us right up against that edge of, of the schedule. If it does, and we needed a little more time for the riverfront, they'll give it to you, I've been through this many times, if, as long as you have to do that EA. If you do a categorical exclusion, they, they won't be too sensitive. And then I already told you about the hotel decision, which is a big decision, so we're hoping, I talked to the developer today, and I'm hoping that by the end of December, I know he has more time for you, but at least by that time, we'll have a gut feel of, should we spend money or shouldn't we spend money in that area? And if we don't spend money in that area, we have a lot of areas that, right now, we're over budget, we're trying to cut areas back, especially in the road areas, and so we'll be able to use your, use the money one way or the other, but it's just a matter of what priority gets the money right now. With that, I didn't have any questions.
I had a question.
Yes, ma'am.
You listed, under what we are doing well, you listed recycling.
Recycling bins and things like that, that you currently have.
We do that at the home side, but downtown.
No, I, I think, I think we meant, when we said recycling, that you have trash cans and things like that, that.
Downtown?
So, at the, at the, at the public displays and at several of the planning meetings, one of the conversations that we had was trash receptacles in the downtown area, and one of the, one of the options that was presented was a receptacle that had a can for recycled material, paper, plastic, bottles, things like that.
Yeah, I've seen those.
And then, the other receptacle was more for your traditional trash, so that was something that most of the people in those planning meetings liked, so.
They wanted the combination unit.
Correct.
Okay, great, I want the combination unit, too.
Leo's worked the, those, those options into the plans.
Okay, good, I'm cool.
The only problem is gonna be, is because of the way our DuPont County recycling is set up, it's not gonna be the panacea that you want it to be, it's not gonna be single-stream recycling, so there's only gonna be so many things you can put in there like it is now.
At least we're moving in the right direction.
Right. And it probably, probably be pretty limited on the number of them, they're not gonna want to come down here and pick up 100 cans that are mixed.
That's something that we really need to work out as we go, is where they're gonna be, and.
But at least it's a starting point.
But it's a step forward in having the option for people to walk through downtown and be able to throw whatever they want.
And there was some talk about recycling some of the, the bike racks that were newly installed, too.
Yeah.
Cause I'm not sure where we're at on that yet, but.
Or moving them just off of the Jefferson trailer.
There was thought.
Painting them was an option, it was something that was discussed, I mean, there, there was a lot of things there.
I didn't get into that type of thing, too much into those details, but we'll be back with your staff and others going through those details.
Very good, fair enough.
That's a little bit farther down the road, but we definitely need to get there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You staying as fight peanut butter?
I am, thank you.
Everybody else good?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Liv.
Leo?
Thank you.
I just wanted to say your name, man. Appreciate it, man. Okay, number three is downtown parking. Who's doing?
Yep, had memo in your packet, the change to, from four hour to three hour has been made, we looked at evaluating the parking a little bit further based on some comments in the parking plan, and had a couple other options for improvements for the council to consider making. First one being, currently we have free parking on the riverfront, and then there's free parking over off, between 7th and 8th and Valley. We do have some parking lots that are vastly underutilized, I guess you could say, that would create the option to allow for additional free parking, the 6th and Valley lot, the 5th and Valley lot, and the 3rd and Washington lot, just being the upper ramp. So those were lots the parking committee recommended to bring forward to council to make as free 24-hour lots, still having the leased lots as they currently sit, but this gives additional options for employees and people to get off the street, or visitors that want to stay longer to get into those parking lots that, right now, really sit empty mostly throughout the day. And then that would allow some separation or distribution of those free lots throughout the area, not just on the riverfront or on the far west end, but throughout, and keeping the other lots as they are currently, particularly the Main and Valley, the 4th and, 4th and Valley as well, and the underside of the ramp. With that, would recommend increasing parking fines to $15 from $10, and looking at a graduated fine amount for repeat offenders. Looking at comparable cities, most are the ones that we found have $15, $15, $30, Muscatine does have a smaller one, it's $5, but they have meters, and then those go up to $10 if they're not paid within 72 hours. But with the option of having free lots more dispersed throughout town, if we're gonna make a change to the fine amount, that felt that that was appropriate to do that now. And then continue to look at graduated fine amount for repeat offenders, we would need to have an electronic ticketing system to better track the violators, that's something the police department on our parking committee was looking at, and we wouldn't be able to implement that until that technology was purchased or allows for that to occur. Eliminating some reserved parking spaces, that's something that had been discussed previously here at City Hall, fire department on Valley Street, and reducing the post office to two spaces on the northern end of the building. These spaces are not frequently used, and/or there are other options for parking in these locations that are typically readily, readily available. Did recommend to keep the police spaces as are, they do have some different circumstances with, whether it's domestic issues or individuals coming in with children that are between separated parents that are, I guess, a safe location to have both parents come with those children, or different situations such as that. The fourth one, eliminating parking passes that are utilized by the senior center and city staff for private vehicles, currently there's a handful of parking passes that are placed in windows.
Whose idea was it to remove those?
Actually, I don't know, well, the committee did, but one of the things that came up is that there's no official authorization for any of them anywhere, and without that, it's kind of, to have them, you would, if the council would not go along with this, you should probably be authorizing those.
Oh, I just, I just wanted to clarify. I heard that you, it was your idea, because you wanted to get rid of my parking pass.
It was all about your parking pass, sir. No, it's actually about, we've, we, we have a system that's in place that there's no authorization to be doing, and it makes it a little difficult. We'd prefer to have an option that was in place that was, if you're gonna be doing it, there, it should be a structure that you all are approving, and not something that's just been a system that's been in place for, I don't know, 20 years.
I'm okay with that, and I don't have a parking pass.
No, I don't have one either, so who cares?
Part of that tied with the senior center as the majority of those, but making that lot back behind their building again free would reduce the need for that as well, so.
So, are we gonna affect parking availability for firefighters who are working 24-hour shift there?
So, it's still a 24-hour limit, so based on their process, when she goes around at end of the day at 3:00 or 4:00 every day, it shouldn't affect there. We would look to get rid of the, they have reserved spaces on the alley, with that lot being free, they could use that as a 24-hour anywhere in the lot, just that we're not taking up two spaces if they park somewhere else, so.
So.
That would open up a few more spaces.
That, I guess that's my question, because I was trying to follow that. So, if a, if a merchant or a resident wanted a guaranteed spot, they can still lease a spot.
Yeah, we'll still have leased spots, spaces, yep.
Okay, I'm good with it.
And even in those, like the 6th and Washington lot, we have three leases that are 24/7 now, if they want to continue to guarantee, to be able to park there for two or three days on end, they can still lease those spaces and have those spots in there. I think Ebert supplies, so, and if you want to guarantee that, you come back any time of day and have your spot, if you're a downtown resident, then you can still lease those spots, but.
Does everybody groovy with that?
So Eric, I see where the senior center is on your map.
Mm-hmm.
And where would the free parking lot be they could park in?
Just behind the Drake, to the south, where the outdoor theater is.
Where the theaters.
So, on the same block.
Can you point to it on there? I just can't find it.
So senior center's here.
Yeah.
Parking would be here.
Okay, thank you.
And they used to park there all the time, that's free before, they, they use that lot.
That lot was free probably five or six years ago.
Does that work, does that work pretty well for someone that's handicapped, maybe, or?
Yeah, there's, it's.
There's still two handicap spots, I think, right in front of that building.
Yeah, there's no steps and no, no change in elevation from that parking lot to the senior center.
Do they have rear access there, Eric?
I don't believe so, they have, there's some, yeah, they have access on 5th Street and access on Jefferson, but not, there's two buildings in between them and the parking lot.
Yep. Are we groovy?
And with this, if we bring these changes forward, we do have the parking brochure, and we do have quotes, getting quotes on printing those, we try and get that out as soon as, to every business downtown, as soon as any of these changes are made.
Everybody satisfied?
I'm good with it.
Then let's, Jim, make the adjustment about my parking pass doesn't get removed, and then everybody at the council's satisfied with it, we're good to go. Enough out of you.
One of the things that was brought up a couple weeks ago was loading and unloading parking spots scattered throughout downtown area instead of how to be designated, was that something that was kind of scrapped by the?
instead of how it being designated. Was that something that was kinda scrapped by the committee or was it looked at?
Something we haven't looked at too much yet. Uh, we, I guess the initial look was, on the spots that we do have, are those needed? And our recommendations to eliminate those instead of adding them throughout. Uh, we haven't heard any issues or complaints from the group that came forward previously, I think with the riverfront and, uh, some of those things, so.
Okay.
That's great, by the parking committee.
Um, if these changes come through, what is the best way to communicate this to the public? Cause I know there were some hurt feelings last time, some tickets, they didn't know we were changing signs. And I know everybody gets their information from different places. How is, how can we best communicate this?
Our goal is to get the brochure out. Uh, I guess we're kinda going the opposite way, where it'd be more relaxed parking than more restrictive. So you wouldn't be getting a ticket, you might be parking in a spot that, um, or there'll be more available parking. But we're trying to, we wanna get a brochure out to every business downtown as soon as this is enacted and, uh, get that on our Facebook and website. Um, we have it all ready, but, uh, we need to make some changes if these go through. So our goal is as staff to print these out and deliver them to every business downtown and get them posted.
Are we able to change the current signage? So it's a little less confusing.
Yeah, uh, Public Works is getting quotes on, uh, changing, so there will be need some, some of the signage in the parking lot. Uh, these three lots where it says, uh, free parking from five till seven-thirty AM, that would, uh, have a sticker or some, something that would go over that, that would say free, unmarked, uh, spaces, free parking 24 hours. Uh, so the 24/7 and the seven-thirty-five, just the leased spaces would actually have the, uh, color indicator. Any, any space that doesn't have the color indicator would be free 24 hours, so we're, and we're looking to make those changes on the signs as well.
Okay.
You good?
I'm great.
You guys good?
So we'll have to bring these forward as action items, looking whether it's an ordinance change or resolution, um, and then kind of a timing to do that, trying to bring them forward as soon as possible. I haven't had a chance to look specifically where these are in the code, but...
All right.
One of them that'll be tough to, to do, the, do in a way with, uh, parking passes, those are, again, those aren't authorized anywhere. Uh, it's more, I think, us, the, the, a lot of them are internal ones that we have. I guess even Chris down at the street department has, he said that, mentioned that he has one that's been sat in their desk that they, they don't use. Just not using those anymore. The, the harder one will be working through with the, this, if you, unless you all wanna pass a resolution that authorizes parking passes for that group. It, the other option is that we're, we're, we'll just have to communicate with them, a, a process for, we're not gonna allow, we're not gonna honor those as, as we move forward. We're gonna transition out of honoring them.
Okay. I think the timing on that, especially with making the lot free, would be, making that lot free before you...
Before we do that.
Jim won't honor them. Jim's un honorable. He won't honor it. Uh, that's on television. Hey, Jim, I just want a confirmation before we move forward. Is it true that the only reason why you authorized the parking study was so that you could get my parking pass away from me? Is that true?
I can neither confirm nor deny.
I appreciate your honesty. You're completely out of order. All right.
No, I'm cool. You only have three months left, so let it go.
Hey, man, even if I did, I'll relinquish mine now. My rights and privileges, uh, I'm, I'm down with that. Okay.
A little song going over there.
Right, right. I'm gonna miss it, man. Uh, we're good?
Yeah, I'm good.
No, I'm not. Number four, emergency grant, funny requests?
No, we're taking that off. Yeah.
Future discussion items. We'll talk about it in the future. Mr. Tisdale, closing remarks?
Uh, we have a fall tree planting, uh, an outdoor classroom demonstration at, uh, five-thirty this Thursday, October third, at Crapple Park at, uh, outdoor classroom, uh, which is directly across the street from the course statue. Um, so our forestry crew will be on end at five-thirty to, uh, kinda demonstrate the proper planting techniques for trees and then, uh, going through, uh, demonstration on the use of the outdoor classroom. So, uh, free and open to the public, encourage anyone that, uh, is interested in, um, looking at our outdoor classroom. We had a, um, we have, uh, three boards up now, and we, uh, have, uh, three more series that we're gonna, hopefully, uh, through our grant, uh, be able to acquire by the end of the year, but, uh, we're gonna walk through the outdoor classroom and then the tree planting at five-thirty on Thursday at Crapple Park.
It's groovy, man. Peanut Butter?
It looks good.
Yeah.
Had the opportunity to attend the League of Cities training in Dubuque last week, and it was phenomenal. Encourage you to take advantage of it if you can. I did the kayak tour, I did the solar tour, the renewable energy tour, the downtown renovation tour, and, uh, it was pretty awesome. Also this weekend, I did the tour of homes. If you had an opportunity to do that, it was really, really a good time. It was a rainy weekend. What else better to do? Gorgeous river views, innovative use and reuse of homes, gorgeous collections, quilts. It was pretty phenomenal. So take advantage of that. If you've ever got, um, Burlington Tour of Homes, make sure you check that out. And then coming up tomorrow, on the October first at six-thirty PM, there's a community meeting that's open to everyone at Homestead, eighteen-thirty-nine. They're gonna view the documentary called Cure Violence. Again, it's open to all. We just wanna explore this program and see if it is feasible that we can implement this in our community. So again, that's tomorrow at six-thirty at Homestead, eighteen-thirty-nine.
Johnny Billups?
All right, I got a short, but, short rant here by an angry old man, so. If you ever saw a recipe for disaster, you're witnessing it right now in the river. We've been, uh, right at minor flood stage for no reason at all for the last, uh, two weeks. And of course, then we have a huge rain event, and, uh, so now they, we're gonna go back to major flood stage. I would implore anybody that has, um, any questions at all to call your federal senators and try to see if we can't get this resolved. Simply put, there's more water coming in at Lock and Dam eighteen than they're putting out in Lock and Dam nineteen. Pools below us were not flooded up until this last rain, now they're getting, creeping up. But this is the same thing we went through last year, and we're gonna continue to do it every spring, every fall, until we get them to start cooperating with this pool, so.
Angry old man rant over. Call your senators.
Okay.
In your house.
I wanna thank, um, Marty and George Grimshaw for, uh, being responsible dog owners. I saw them picking up their poop today, and you can laugh.
Dogs poop.
Uh, dogs poop.
Yeah, I'm good.
You can laugh, you can laugh, you know, you know. Shane's just saying that for the joke. Actually, I'm not saying that for the shock effect. I busted up Jim for the shock effect. Um, no, no, everybody, anybody that's ever cut grass, it drives me nuts. When I don't own a pet and I cut grass and I get splatter kicked up because somebody was being irresponsible. And, uh, so I have to police my area, and I even caught a lady that was purposely doing it. And I know who you are. Uh, so, don't, let's, let's be responsible. And anytime I see that, I recognize that. There was another lady that I saw being very responsible. Uh, she walks her dog down the street from my church, and I stopped and gave her a bracelet. I don't know what her name is, or I'd call her out because, uh, she's just very responsible, and that's what you're supposed to be. If you're gonna have a pet, then handle your business. But I do wanna just give a shout to the Grimshaws. Also, uh, just give a shout out to, uh, Johnny Billups, uh, to, uh, Rhonda, to CDK. Um, we had the NAACP banquet, uh, this weekend, and it, uh, I thought it turned out really good. I, I asked the chief to have words, but he wasn't talking that night. You know, he gets uppity every time he shows up with his wife. But anyway, it, it was, it was a good event. It was just good to see people there from the city, uh, representing. Um, John gave the, uh, the, uh, welcome, and it was, uh, dude was awesome, it really was. So, um, just happy about that. The other thing is, for, uh, Mr. McGregor, uh, a guy stopped me in Hy-Vee, and he says his wife, um, has been meaning to, uh, to get this complaint out, the eleven-hundred block of North Central. This is just dark. And, uh, asked if we could, if somebody could take a look at that to see if maybe there's a possible way we could light it up. So I just wanna bring that up so I don't forget. It's eleven-hundred block up North Central, and apparently it's really dark, and they're wondering if we could get some lights in that area. MPT?
I have nothing, but thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Counselor?
Uh, I just wanted to thank everybody who came to the, um, roundtable last Monday night, uh, down at the loft to, uh, discuss, uh, violence in the community and throw out different ideas. Wasn't the turnout I had hoped for, uh, but I thought it was still, uh, a good forum, so.
Next one's October tenth.
Yep.
Yep.
At?
At the loft, right?
At the loft, at six o'clock.
At the lower level of the loft.
Yeah, I was checking to see if it was five-thirty or six. I couldn't remember. I believe it's, I believe it's five-thirty. You good?
Yeah.
James? Nick McGregor?
Oh, I did, um, just wanna mention, did you guys see the Ohio State game this weekend, free kick game?
Yeah, I, I saw the highlights.
Were there highlights in that game?
Well, for one side.
Ton for Ohio State.
What did you follow? There was low lights too, my friend.
Sorry. You know, I was gonna be nice when I got up here. I felt it from you, and you know, I was thinking about that whole parking pass situation.
Don't go there, man. Don't, Nick.
There, there's three-hour parking. I mean, if you ever worked a full day, you might have to be concerned.
Sure.
Hey, that, those Nebraska comments.
I wouldn't say you're out of order, but...
I saw a headline today that said, uh, Nebraska should give up their title hopes, comma, forever. So I thought that was pretty good.
Go ahead, Nick. What did you wanna say?
Um, well, obviously you mentioned the river is coming up. Uh, the projected forecast is seventeen foot. Um, at sixteen-five, we have to start activating some HESCO work around the north, uh, end of the wall, so that way we can wrap the HESCOs around there. We're gonna keep an eye on it. The forecast, it was seventy-two hours, so they're projecting some rain in there. Um, so we'll keep an eye on it. We have till at least next Saturday, or this Saturday, rather, uh, to do that. So, uh, you may see us do that come Wednesday, Thursday.
If you look up north, it's gonna climb.
Yeah. Yeah, it was at the top of it on Saturday, so.
Are we doing okay with the HESCO barriers then, our stock on that?
Yeah, we have, we have some in stock, so we, I mean, for what we have for our projected flood crest right now, we will, we'll be fine.
Okay.
We have enough to be able to do what we, we need to, to even go to where we were earlier this spring. Granted, I don't want to get there. The other thing is, is we put out a press release today. Um, part of our HMA project, uh, is starting. Agency Street between Shields and Kern is the nearest there. It's just, it's Gertrude. Uh, they're gonna start milling and, and overlaying the southern lane. That southern lane is pretty beat up. Uh, so that was added into the HMA project. That will be the first one on the list. Uh, and then they'll move into kind of the North Hill area to, to do that work. Um, and we stress that we don't want anything opened up, um, and left open for winter, so. There may be, you know, depending on weather, uh, and the production of asphalt, we may be seeing that project take mostly in the next spring. But you will see that start, I think, tomorrow on Agency Street, so there was a press release.
Do you think that it can get done this fall?
No, the whole project will not.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll, it'll carry until next spring.
Okay.
So, sorry about the comment about the parking.
No, you're not. First, you're nice to me.
Bust my chops about the hospital. And the one, I guess the one comment is, is at least we always have title aspirations, right?
Man, this guy's on a roll tonight, man. Sit him down. I was gonna say something, but the camera's live. I'll wait till it goes off. James?
I'm on the radio on Wednesday, so, uh, then that means you all are up for next week.
Next week.
Um, and I don't have anything else. I'm not gonna talk about football.
Wise man. If there's nothing else, again, good to see Bill tonight, um...